Good evening. I would like to call this North Bend City Council regular session for Tuesday, March 23rd, to order. Please join Pat Gahl and my staff for the play.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. We can move on to item number two, which is the consent calendar. Sir?
Yes. City Council, you have before you a consent counter item that was discussed at the work session yesterday. It's authorization for fencing project in North Bend Public Library. Low bidder cost for this project is $7,675. And staff is recommending approval. For the record, you had Councilor Garvoden via Zoom to participate in your vote.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move.
Second.
I'll have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three on the agenda, we have public comment. I do have some public comments tonight. I have two that I'm going to read in to the record, and then I have one, I think, that is going to be live. So I'll start by reading these. The first public comment is by Linda Swett at 1179 Windsor. It has come to my attention, excuse me, that the last letter to the council was not read into the record at the work session. I would like to read this into the record. I was present at the Parks Committee meeting on October 19th, at which an odd vote was taken without a quorum. Mrs. Brown and Mr. McGrady, brand new on the council, voted for the proposed frisbee golf course. Dr. Gleason was hesitant to vote, but seemed to vote no. And Mayor Weatherall voted no until Mr. Milliron quickly brought up whether the mayor should vote on the issue. Either way, a two-two vote does not stand under Robert's rules. The approval, of course, did not take place at the public meeting because that vote should not stand, and I don't know if it was ever taken with a quorum of the Parks Board. Since then, the proposed frisbee course has been quite busy. Once again, I ask that at least two holes be moved. There are too many frisbee players throwing across the parking lot and over the playground to the first hole. This week, we'll also observe players throwing from the parking lot to halfway across the field to Chappelle Parkway. One player threw five frisbees in a row. We have noted families with young children packing up and leaving when frisbees start flying in public areas. The holes are too short for these strong players, and they are far too close to any public play and walking areas. Please consider having appropriate course that is not squeezed into areas where the public comes to enjoy the park. More land away from public use areas needs to be given over to the frisbee golf if the city is to have a course. And it is important that the city conduct its business in a legal way, especially in front of so many witnesses, such as the public meeting on October 19th. The number two that I'm going to read into the record is by Jesse Jones at 3581 Edgewood Drive. I would like to request that the following comments be read into the record. I am writing to the city council and public today to help address some of the concerns in regards to the Ferry Road Disc Golf Course. Specifically, I would like to address those who feel this course would add another financial responsibility to the city. Those who have expressed these concerns have clearly not seen the amount of money, time, and work that our community has already invested into our current parks. Our current course at Windsor Park has been there for over 25 years, and according to Parks Superintendent Brian Owen, the financial burden of this park has only decreased more and more over the years. In just the last couple of years, the disc golf community has raised over $6,000 for the installation and upkeep of both Ferry and Windsor Park. Hundreds of hours of volunteer work have gone into our current disc courses, which we have installed seven new tee pads and helped with ground clearing and removal of downed trees. Based on our past, we are confident that the installation of Ferry Disc Golf Course will not have any additional costs and may even help decrease the requirements on the city's parks finances. With yearly disc golf events, we can provide additional funding for the park, some of which could be set aside to ensure that there is no upfront cost required for future fundraisers, no matter who is running them. Disc golf has only grown through the years and has evolved into a professional sport, which is becoming part of the school and college curriculums across the world. It is also one of the few sports that has actually grown with the pandemic, and up the amount of people who are willing and able to volunteer have also grown with the sport. It is discouraging to hear people comment that clearly don't frequent the parks enough to even though the difference between Simpson and Ferry, and who have so little faith in our city government that they assume the First Amendment right has been violated, when they cannot see all the public comments on Facebook, when this may be due to individuals' privacy settings. To me, this just shows how quickly people like this are to pass judgment and to make public comments on things that clearly don't understand. Not only have the public comments received been overwhelmingly in favor of the disc golf course, but the amount Ferry Road Park is being utilized has significantly increased. However, the past city council meetings, I have heard most of the discussion about a few concerns of further changes to the layout. I fear that people may be attempting to use their public influence and position to create a more effective lines of communication with city council than what has been provided to the general public. I hope that you let our past actions speak louder than the voices of these few individuals who clearly feel the need to attack the character of the disc golf course and community in order to make their complaints seem more valid. Okay, we also have, I think Natalie Ranker is on. Are you there Natalie?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm Natalie Ranker, 414 Simpson Avenue in North Bend. And I thought I'd be addressing Mayor Engelke, but I will address city councilors. Okay, I'm not so much opposed to the disc golf course in Ferry Road Park as I am to the way that it's been created. I was a member of the Parks Advisory Board from 2016 through 19, and was president at the February 4th, 2019 Parks Meeting, and the April 9th, 2019 Council Meeting when the course was proposed by the Disc Golf Club. It has been reported that, quote, consensus was to move forward. However, to my understanding at that time, this was not an approval of the course, but an idea to be more fully researched with more information to follow. A special Parks Advisory Board meeting was held on October 19th of last year, attended by the mayor, several councilors, and Parks Board members and local citizens, many of whom were Simpson Heights neighbors. At that meeting, among the problems discussed were public safety around the baseball field and the walking paths created by errant discs, the disturbance of the east side grove cleared by neighbors with its osprey nests that are dear to us, a need for increased parking area, especially for proposed tournaments, a need for more restrooms, insurance liability for the city if anyone was injured by a disc, the need to obtain permission from the Confederated Tribes to disturb ground, and other issues. None of these issues has been addressed in a satisfactory manner, and some not at all. And yet, we have a fully functioning nine-hole disc golf course being utilized at Ferry Road Park. I was there last Sunday. There were about five to six groups of four to five golfers, and the parking lot was two-thirds to three-quarters full. What will happen during a tournament, mostly held on weekends and perhaps with a baseball game happening as well? The lot is almost full now during ballgames, so where will the cars be parked? Are there any plans for increased parking, and will it be completed by July when tournaments are scheduled to begin according to the club? The inadequate restrooms remain the same. I observed several golfers looking for discs in the grove even though the course has been changed. As I walked, I waved so golfers could see me, and all of them were courteous. However, there've been reports from neighbors of others not observing etiquette and throwing over people on the paths, and mothers removing their children from the baseball area fearing injury. I've not seen a council discussion on city liability in case of injury. Has there been one, and who is responsible? Also, nothing on the Confederated Tribes. Have they given their approval to disturb their ground? Necessary changes need to be made. Some will be at significant cost to the city, not at the no cost as described in the plan, before a permanent course is ready for tournament use. I ask that you address these issues before proceeding. Thank you.
Okay, is that it for public comment?
What about these, there are several others that are...
They're just to be added to the record, not included to the rec...
Why aren't they...
Because they're not asked to be read? So they just want them included in the record.
They're in the heading of each one of them, says included in the record.
Why aren't they read into the record?
Because they were asked, they said, "I asked them to be included in the record," it says right there. This is read into the record. There's, they stipulate where they want.
There's a difference.
There is.
I see. All right, I did not know that. All right.
All right, moving on to number four, which is a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Rental Assistance for Coos County. Now is the time for the advertised public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant application process. The city of North Bend is eligible to apply for a Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon for emergency rental assistance for Coos County. I will now open the hearing. So I've opened it for testimony.
There's no one signed up.
There's no one signed up. Seeing and hearing no testimony, I will now close the public hearing. Sir?
This public hearing is concluded for the benefit of those watching online and for the council. This public hearing is required statutory on federal law whenever a governing body seeks public funds from the federal government under the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. As this governing body has heard in the past, we are seeking funds in cooperation with Coos County, and also using ORCA as our sub-grantee to manage a rental reimbursement program. We have already had a pre-application approval. We're now in the process of writing the grant application, and also you will see as the next part of business, a sub-grantee agreement come before the council during your April sessions. But that is all that were required at this time.
Okay, so I can close the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I will close the public hearing and come back into regular session. Number five on the agenda is the North Bend Public Library, RFID conversion. Director of Library Services, Haley.
Hi. Staff have obtained quotes for a radio frequency identification, or RFID, system conversion and equipment. Two vendors have provided quotes for the conversion, and those were included in your packet. We received quotes from Biblioteca and Envisionware. The North Bend Public Library Board reviewed materials provided by the vendors, quotes, and staff recommendations at their March 10th meeting. At our work session yesterday, we had discussion about the benefits of an RFID system for North Bend Public Library users and our community, and the library board's recommendation. The library board recommends that the council authorize library staff to proceed with the purchase of the RFID system from Biblioteca, as described in the provided system quote, and in the amount of $57,455.16.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any discussion? We talked about this yesterday at the work session.
Yeah, you might mention, as while there's a variance in that, Haley went through the fact that the one, the Bibli, or whatever it is, is much more user-friendly.
Right.
As much can be expandable and go not only for now, but for tomorrow's uses as well.
And I think the other thing is that it kind of syncs with the Coos Bay Library, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Right.
Same software.
Okay. Okay, could I get a motion to approve?
I move to authorize purchase of RFID conversion from Biblioteca.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, are we going to do that? Nope, we are not doing number six tonight. And so that moves us to number seven, the city administrator report.
Council, you have email to you, also posted on social media and the city's website is my city administrator's report. Couple highlights that I want to bring out to the council. The council has previously taken action when the county was asking for abatement on the project turnkey, which happened to be the Parkside Hotel. The county has since withdrawn, and they've explained to us why. It's not a negative reason, it's a timing issue and a fiduciary responsibility. So the Oregon Community Foundation is now working directly with the umbrella organization of Bryant's Home, and they also have hired an outside land use consultant. At some point, I suspect, within the next 30 days, they will be before this governing body asking for an agreement, very much like was done with the county, so you get another bite at the apple. Everything sort of stays in play. We've already audited the books on the taxes for the hotel, and the foundation has conveyed to the city that they have approved the funding for the purchase and renovation. I understand that this is, complete cost is just north of, I believe it's somewhere between 1.3 and 1.4 million for the whole kit kaboodle to renovate. And they have approved that funding in principle. What they have to get past is our planning and zoning hurdles. They wanted a blanket letter, and we explained to them that we can't give a blanket letter and bypass planning zoning, there's a process. And so the motion that this governing body has willed so far is to abate that, but now with the counting out, it will most likely be the umbrella organization for Bryant's Home, Operation Hope, and I expect that soon. I communicated to the council in writing that the senior center contract is up. The airport has advised that it goes to, I believe, the end of June, and that they are only open at this point to negotiating a year-to-year lease on that facility, and the key word is negotiations. So I suspect the terms will change. So I've asked the council to give me some feedback on that. And then, last but not least, there'll be a change in the work session schedule. In your council rules, your city administrator calls work sessions, and so your April 12th work session will be a 6:00 to 9:00 session. The League of Oregon Cities will be present to provide training to the council. We will survey you all and make sure that you're fed, but that'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 on April 12th for that work session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is committee reports. I do believe we have Parks Committee report, is that correct?
We do. That being said, I know the police committee hasn't met, but I think it's important to note that two officers were lost in that Boulder shooting yesterday, that mass shooting that happened. One of those officers went in bravely to try to protect as many individuals in that shopping center as possible, and as someone that teaches active threat training, knowing what it, and being an ex-law enforcement officer, and caring as much as I do about our own police officers, I can't help to think what it would have been like for some of ours to be in that very same situation. And I just think it's, we should keep those families in our thoughts. That was a very tragic situation. Anyway, sorry. From a Parks Board, I haven't typed it up. Look, that's professional. Some discussions were had as an advisory committee regarding items referred to the committee by the council. Those topics were related to Ferry Road Park Disc Golf, and on, one, consideration of proposed compromise to the course, two, how does it fit within the Parks Master Plan, and three, possible alternate solutions within the city and community. These were all discussed as a whole, as the possible plans encompassed all three of the tasked items. This advisory committee discussed possible alternative locations for baskets one through four, which would be the ones up around the grove, around the park, around the baseball field, in an effort to reduce the stress caused by walkers' families in and around the play areas, Baseball Diamond and the gazebo locations. The discussion was had to consider moving holes one through four over towards the Pittam Loop area, and restructuring the Ferry Road Park nine holes closer to the Windsor nine holes. So if you came out from Windsor and right across the road, you'd basically start, it would be number one on that nine-hole course, and then moving west of the park. This makes, like I said, this makes the layout of the disc golf course on the west side of the park and leave the east side for the families and walking, understanding that there would still be some spill throughout, or some throws across paths on the west side because there is a couple holes that cross as you head towards Chappelle. But felt the compromise was better than the current situation, based on some of the feedback that we've received. This newly proposed nine would start where the current number nine hole is and play west. The Disc Golf Club, an individual from their group is on our committee, seemed to be willing to look at locations along Pittam Loop to suggest for the new four-hole locations. Once those are located, we can consider what steps are needed to move those pilot holes to the new locations and see how the feedback changes. We're optimistic about this compromise. Parking will always be an issue at Ferry Road, but even with this new layout. But this would allow for some more multi-use situations where you could have a baseball game going on at the same time as a disc golf tournament, at the same time as kids playing in the park. David did also report to us about grant funding that would help us possibly move that Parks Master Plan forward, which was really exciting. That would be nice if someone else wants to kind of carry that burden, so I think everybody was pretty jazzed about that. But we are optimistic that maybe we can make some compromises and make this work for everybody, so that the main parts of Ferry Road that are for families could still be utilized as such, while some of the more open areas, and then the addition to Pittam Loop, could add to the rest of that nine holes and give some happy medium.
That sounds really good.
Sounds like we're working through things.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, any other council committee reports? Okay, moving on, we have council comments. Councilor Nordoff, we'll start with you tonight.
Okay. You've heard several comments from people who were at the August 19th, not August, October 19th meeting. I think they speak for themselves. There was one that was submitted on March 8th, for the work session on March 8th, from Deana McDonald, and she says, her question or comment is, says, "This is concerning the Disc Golf Course and the vote that is in question in October that I attended, and it was a two-to-two tie vote, not two to zero. That is not what I witnessed. This needs to be corrected." The city managers...
I think we have to correct you here, and this is somebody else's comment, this is not your comment. So we need to...
All right, my comment then is that the city manager responded to her and said that, "Oh, what's important is that the question of the people voting." And multiple people there heard that it was two-to-two. The chairman has always voted. I was on the board for four years, he's always voted. He voted against it, and you don't get to recuse yourself and change your vote after you have voted. And two-to-two is a tie, it's a failure. The motion was not reintroduced. And my larger point is that in the handout for last week's Parks Board meeting, two weeks, no, it was last, two weeks ago, there's an agenda, and then the very next page is a memo from the city administrator, and it says, "The Parks Advisory Committee then voted two to zero. Not all members voted or were present to recommend the change order to move forward to city council for consideration and to do as it sought fit." That's not correct. It was two-to-two, which is a failure, and I'm objecting to the two-to-zero vote being put on city letterhead and given to the Parks Committee. It needs to be an accurate representation of what the vote was, and it was two-to-two, which is a failure. And then, under staff recommendation, Parks Superintendent Brian Owen concurs with the recommendation of the Parks Advisory Board. And so, that's not correct either, because it was not two-to-zero, it was two-to-two, which is a failure. And the most, in my mind, the most important thing about local government is that it is honest and transparent. Not only that, but this is National Sunshine Week, which is all about transparency in government. So my point is this, I'm asking that this memo either be filed in Chapter 13, filed away, or revised, to show what happened at that meeting. And I heard it, and multiple other people heard it, two-to-two, that's a failure, you don't get to redo it. And I would ask that this memo be revised before it ever shows up at another Parks Committee meeting. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Councilor Slater?
What we got coming up in May are pool levies on the ballot, and we'll be out to talk, we as individuals, we'll be out to talk to a lot of you. And I think you'll find out that councilors, as well as all the people in North Bend, really appreciate what that pool is and what's going on, and you'll see that over the last several years, we've done a whole lot of maintenance on that pool and responsibly managed it that way, and now it's an issue for all of us to step up and help it be the facility that we've enjoyed for many, many decades. So I'm looking forward to that conversation, and I appreciate seeing you and talking to you about that. Secondly, I'd like to say I appreciate Councilor Gleason's management and direction of the Parks Committee, is making roads to accomplish things, to get things through, not getting wound up in discussions or issues which are non-productive. So I truly appreciate the effort you put in it, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Councilor Gahl?
Well, I also, Tim, there was great comment on the pool there, and I've got it wrote down right here. Eric, I think you're doing a great job, and if we can come together, I don't have nothing against frisbee golf, I kind of got a little bit of heartburn with the first couple three holes, and it sounds like the direction you guys are going, you know, and we do have to remember that it is a Parks Advisory Board. We still are North Bend City Council sitting here, so, you know, we at some point could step in and say, "Hey, you know, if we feel like your advice and the committee's advice and everything is to move two or three holes, that's what we'll do." Anyway, David, I really appreciated yesterday's meeting, you covering this insurance scenario with the volunteers. It is a way bigger deal than I would have ever guessed it was going to get to be, but hopefully, like I commented yesterday, that all of our department heads and, you know, staff can make this, you know, seamless, or as seamless as it can be, to get our volunteers back on board and doing things. And I also appreciated that you mentioned in an email to Brian about... And I also appreciated that you mentioned in an email to Brian about Toffmeyer's Trees because I knew, I had a phone call, must've been last Friday or something, from Jim and he is getting nervous because he's going to have a bunch of trees that in their, in their plan has been scheduled to go in the ground soon. So I really appreciated the email going to Brian to say, let's, let's try to make that happen, especially, you know, in, in April when, you know, that we'd look pretty good right then. So that's about all I got. I, you know, I, yeah, I think we're, I think we're on the right track here. So, all right, that's all I got, Bill.
Thank you, Councilor Gleason.
Yeah, I got to echo the pool thing. I mean, I know that it's coming up and we really need to take stock in whether or not it's important to us as a community, which I believe deep down it is. And that's where I learned how to swim. I mean, that's where my kids learned how to swim and I want my grandkids to learn how to swim there someday. So we need to come and do that together as a community. I, I think, I think I gotta, I gotta thank David. David, I don't think you get nearly enough praise for all of the stuff you deal with. The, the amount, we just see the surface of the work that you do and, and I, I think I can say for myself as a council, I appreciate what, the information you give us and the things that you have to answer. Councilor Nordoff said at Sunshine Week, and you sure deal with a lot of inclement weather. So I think that, that it's been nice to have you here and moving the city in a direction that seems like one built on, for success, for, I think for the first time in a long time. I think we're, we're doing some things in here that, that I think people have wanted to do for a while and, and I'm optimistic at the way the city is going and, and I, and I think that you have a direct part in that, obviously. So thank you for, for all of what you deal with on a daily basis.
You're quite welcome, but I don't, I don't do it alone. We've got a great team and great staff here.
That's what it takes.
Good answer.
Well, I think, I got a couple things. Captain Bennett, I want you to take this back to your team that we're thinking about. It was a tough day yesterday for the police officers and a lot of people.
Thank you, sir. Our murders are indeed heavy and our prayers go out to all the families that suffered loss.
Yeah, I realize that and it's, you know, you guys do a wonderful job getting out there every single day and especially every night because things change at night. I've been out, I've been out on a patrol and I encourage everybody that's on this council, if they have not been out in an evening run, they, they should take the time because it'll really change your mind on a lot of different things. And the same with the, the fire department. They, they answer so many calls and so many different scenarios, it's mind-boggling. Also, pool levy. Yes, please get out there, you know, support the pool. I think it's important to our community. It's one of those things that we've had in this community forever and ever and ever and none of us want to see it go away by any stretch of the imagination. Also, I, I do believe, David, that the communication between the, the city and the council and the public is at an all-time high, in my opinion. Been on this council for 15 years and the communication has never been so good. And that, you know, that just encourages the heck out of me, knowing that, you know, go online, read the city administrator report because he couldn't possibly read everything that he's done or all of you folks have done in the last two weeks. And it's very encouraging. And do we have any other business?
Go ahead and get Larry's phone.
Oh, Larry, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh, man, that's right.
I don't even, I don't even see him. Oh, there it is, Councilor Garb.
I'm not here.
You have any garb there tonight?
No, can you hear me?
We can.
Yep. Yep, I have nothing to say.
Thank you for that comment.
Officially.
It's official now.
I think that's the most he's actually ever said.
I appreciate that, Larry. Appreciate you hanging in there. And I know it's a tough...
They could just give you the hand tonight.
It's a tough time of year for you, I feel for you. It's busy, tax season's busy for you.
It, I know, yeah.
Larry.
What?
Any other business?
No, sir.
Okay, if no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Wow, Bill, you need to run.